All right, I'll call this meeting the order. Thank you, everyone for coming. Today is May the 12th, 2021. You all have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated? Nick?
Under new business, can I add the Arcadia Trail, please?
Arcadia Trail, so lay that seven, or sorry, 822 Arcadia Trail. Would that be the Tookapock Trail, Nick?
Yes, it would be. Thank you.
Any other additions or deletions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved by Daniel, I have a seconder. Seconded by Lauren. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Any declarations of conflict interest, if there is any, please let me know and we'll note that in the minutes. Item number five, presentations, group ATN draft strategic priorities document. Today we have with us Tom, Ron, Corinne, and Amy. I'm not going to say your last names because I don't know them. I know Tom McGuire. Can't remember Amy's last name or or Corinne's. But anyway, we have group ATN with the strategic planning priorities draft document. So I'm going to hand the floor over to one of you.
Thanks. Thanks so much, Warden. It's a delight to be back with the council again. We recognize you've got a heavy agenda today, so we want to do this as quickly and efficiently as possible. We're going to start with a short presentation just to remind folks where we've been and what's gone on since we last met. And then I'm going to, we'll share the screen and I'll bring up the draft plan, which I believe has been circulated to council members and just walk quickly through it. And we will be at your disposal in respect to that from the point of view of whether you want to go through it piece by piece, or if you're sufficiently familiar with it that we can just take questions, your comments, any input, any suggested changes or whatever that you may wish to make. So without any further ado, Warden, I'm going to get Tom to bring up the presentation and turn it over to him.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Can you see that? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so this is just kind of to walk through what we've done to date and then I'll quickly turn it back over to Ron. But we wanted to remind folks and review the process to get to where we are today. So is that visible to everyone? Yeah, okay. So we'll go through the meeting purpose. We'll review the process that we went through, walk through the draft strategic plan, talk about next steps, and then have some discussion. And part of the next steps, there's a couple of slides here. I think Corinne is going to review on the communications. So what we did, so without getting into the scope of work, you know, the goal here was to set forth the strategic plan for the new council for the next number of years. And so we would have reviewed a number of case studies, a number of benchmarks, strategic plan from other jurisdictions. We undertook a discovery process, so basically looking at emerging themes and priorities. And with that, we set up an initial strategic or strategy map. And that was in preparation for a workshop and facilitated session that we had together. We undertook a pestle analysis and I'll go through that acronym again. So the P is for political, E is for economics, social, technological, legal, and environmental. So those are the factors that we, it's sort of like a SWOT analysis, but a little bit more robust and richer. And then we examined other contextual factors and implications for the plan. So this is demography, population migration, and how the economy is operating. We had an engagement process with council and staff, which in a COVID context, and today, and you know, weeks later, it seems like it was a long, long time ago, but one of the rare moments where you get to work together in a COVID appropriate facilitated session. So that was well participated in. It was an immersive session and good collaboration with council and staff and our team. And that led to objectives for the strategic plan and a focus on probably the greatest precision in year one and a number of other policy and focuses for subsequent years. And then we're having this session to get feedback on where we are today. So some clarifying factors. When we look at the strategic plan, we want to make sure that it's compatible and complementary with other initiatives. So we review it for its alignment with Modi's financial plan and it checks out there. We look at it in terms of the capital plan and make sure that it's aligned with that. We look at other legislative requirements and how the plan tracks against those. And then we look at how it maps to, you know, federal and provincial priorities, so that, you know, anything that, the thinking there, of course, is if you're aligning with things that the province and the feds are wanting to support it, it makes it an easier case to attract support. And then the plan linking to the continuity with the previous plan, it's important to have, you know, the collective impact of past efforts and leverage those as much as possible going forward. So on the communications, I'll keep working the slides, but I think Corinne, you're going to jump in here.
Hi, Anne. Thanks. Thanks so much, Tom. And I have, again, just a number of points to walk through here, but I feel like my slides are a little bit crammed, looking at yours, Tom. Anyway, thanks so much, everybody. And as everyone has said here on the call, what a luxury it feels like looking back at the session that we were able to share together. And what I'm going to do here is just recap the W5 exercises, we like to call it, you know, the sort of the who, what, where, why, when that we went through. And so some of the key themes that we were able to distill from our discussion specifically on those top line points, so the economy, people, governance, and stewardship, which is, you know, delineated really well in the strategic plan. These are the sort of top line points that we talked about in terms of how, what we wanted to capture and what we wanted to telegraph to the broader community, looking at future opportunities for economic growth. And in that discussion, they were also, we talked a lot, like sectorally specific, I guess, if that's a word, talked a lot about tech, technology, cell coverage, you know, being a huge issue that needed to be addressed, fishery, tourism, and looking at your, you know, people as a resource. We also talked about harnessing the energy and momentum of the community as it is right now, leveraging those strengths that we know that Modi has. Although I did get a little bit of feedback on my tagline, the Modi momentum. Looking at Tom here because he was the one giving me a hard time about it. We had a lot of discussion on accountability as well, just making sure that in terms of communication, that all of those, you know, all of the pieces in terms of your planning are transparent and available. We had a lot of talk about governance and best practices. We also talked about wanting the community to understand that there's a strategic direction here. I mean, obviously, it's called a strategic plan, but we want, wanted community members to understand that there is indeed a tactical intentional focus for the way, for the path forward that council is steering. We also did have a lot of discussion on asset preservation and cultivation, what those assets are. One of the things that I pulled in here was just that it was, it was interesting to see the discussion on including the natural environment as an asset, you know, because a lot of times people think of those items as sort of nuts and bolts pieces. So obviously, a really important piece of our discussion. We also talked a lot about diversity and how that will be captured in your, not only in your messaging, but also in the way that you're positioning the community and what the content of those pieces looks like. So talked a lot about people being able to sort of see themselves in Modi and what efforts are being made to, you know, to sort of be inclusive. And I think Victoria had actually raised on a couple of occasions, like, you know, how are we doing that? Let's be intentional about it. And so I know that we have some, some ideas in the next slide about how we're rolling that out. And again, the, you know, making decisions that are fact based and driven by research and so the council can make informed, informed decisions. Next slide, Tom. So the public rollout is fairly straightforward. We had some discussion about this and talked about some different tools and techniques that we can roll out. I actually had an opportunity in the last, since our session, to look at the ways that other municipalities do roll out some of these, their strategic plans in this day and age. It sounds like my grandmother is saying that, but there are new ways that people do this, you know, with videos. And I know we had some discussion around TikTok and things like that, but for the, for the, I guess, top line aspects of, you know, what, how we're going to, how we see this rolling out is by the end of the month, there'll be a ratified final version of the strategic plan that will be posted to the website. And knowing that, you know, maybe strategic plans aren't always the most exciting of reading, you know, we don't know if there's going to be a stampede to the website for that, we also want to make sure that we're drawing people there. So, you know, Vicky does such a wonderful job with your social media. So we'll be doing things like, and we were certainly recommending having pull quotes and infographics, things that are, you know, maybe areas of focus or interest for residents that will pull them to the full document. We also recommend doing a truncated or a brief document that is sort of like a two pager, kind of like a handbook. And I know that group ATN does these quite a bit nowadays. But we do want to make sure that there's a bit of, an easier way for people to digest this volume of information, so that we'll be looking at, you know, visual representations and some of the key either metrics or, you know, areas of focus. I actually, I think I had an edit on my slide. So moving this up, if these, these aren't actually in sequence, but looking at how you will telegraph this to some of your key stakeholders, I would also, we're also recommending that there's a direct email distribution. So that would happen kind of concurrently with it becoming public on your, all of your platforms, just making sure that all of your partners are in the loop on, on this exciting development, because it really is. When you look at any kind of strategic planning session, when you're sort of committing to a direction as a community. And I had to consider where are we headed and how is our driving type of video. So I can share these over, you know, for a couple of links that we have to, you know, for example, how Toronto has been rolling out the strategic plans. And from a communications perspective, they have, there's a number of, you know, pieces. Now, we know that we don't all have the budgets of the Greater Toronto Area municipality. So we do have, I have a couple of other sort of smaller municipal examples of ways that, that you can really get your messaging out to residents. And so that's, that's it for me, Tom.
And it's back to Ron, I think.
Okay, thanks very much, Tom and Corinne. And Warden, if you're okay with us pressing ahead, I'm going to share a screen and try to get up the actual strategic plan. Can you folks see that? Okay, so before, before we begin, Tom talked about alignment with federal provincial priorities as well. And so, you know, we, at the time, we undertook the strategic plan, neither the federal nor the provincial government had actually tabled their budgets. And of course, that's happened in the last number of weeks. And so I think it's a very good story from the point of view of Modi, because if you think about thematically, what were those budgets about, you know, kind of key themes included, you know, climate change and the environment, you know, renewable energy, inclusive growth, so that whole equity and inclusion in terms of the way the economy is going to go, the critical importance of talent development and training in, at a time when, you know, there's, there are demographic changes. And then, of course, the big theme everywhere, population growth. And so I think we have captured, and you have captured in your input that you provided, and the leadership that council gave during that, that two day session. So I think it, I think it ticks the plan, the overall plan ticks the alignment box really quite well. Starting out, I want to, want to just, Warden, say that you folks have had a chance to look at the plan. I'm not sure if you want me to walk through it. I can do that page by page and just cover the highlights, or whether you'd be more interested in turning it over to discussion and input right away. So I can pause for a moment and see what your thoughts on that are.
We are on a touch of a time crunch. So I guess maybe unless someone wants you to go through it and review the highlights and the points, if anyone has any questions, I guess I'd open up the floor. And I cannot see everybody. The only one I see is Ron and Sherry. So if someone has something, please just turn off your mic and speak up.
Maybe I could just quickly go through it, Warden. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, so let's do that. And before starting, I want to give a shout out to Amy, because Amy did a lot of the formatting and making it look good. And of course, we can, we'll take, we'll take advice on that as well. So a couple of quick things. Starting out, we want this plan to, I think everybody wanted this plan to be relatively short and readable. And I think it is relatively short and readable. Starts out with a letter from the warden. And in this, we tried to feed back those things that you told us, you're hearing on the doorstep when you, during the recent election campaign, striking some of those thematics around being responsive to taxpayers and stakeholders in your area. And so I think, I think that we've tried to reflect that in the warden's message. In the message from CAO Victoria, one of the themes we wanted to note there is the, how tough a year it's been, and the fact that the Modi staff team have really shown through this that they can pivot quickly and adapt to that ever changing context. And I think, you know, that's something around which the council can have considerable pride. You've got a, you've got a very good staff team there. And then the preamble really just focuses on, you know, messaging what we're trying to achieve there. So earning and sustaining trust with your residents, you know, paying attention to quality of life for residents, the imperative to attract new businesses, partnerships, that sort of thing. And, you know, taking care of infrastructure that you've been given responsibility for responsiveness to what you've heard on the, on the doorstep. Some of those themes are very important. Tom talked about the pestle analysis. And, you know, making sure that you're telegraphing to the community that this is something that you're going to work. And, you know, Modi has a great reputation with the Action Register process and making sure that you're reporting out on a regular basis in terms of how the plan is, is scaling to what you said you were going to do. So it's not something gets stuck up on the website, never returned to, or returned to only once a year. It's something that actually the CAO is, is bringing forward in the monthly CAO report. And also, it sets out an evaluation and metrics piece that talks about each of the objectives being dealt with. So you've seen the mission and the vision, you've seen the values that, that those were all things that we worked shop during the two day session. And again, the strategic directions and priorities are presented, you know, in simple language, one word. And so if anybody wants to look at Modi's strategic plan, it's about the economy, it's about people, it's about governance, and it's about stewardship. So a pretty streamlined and straightforward approach to that. And then we get into each of the strategic directions. So there are only four. When you look at contemporary strategic plans from municipalities, they tend to be of this variety, relatively simple, straightforward, short, pithy. And then these, the, this part of the plan gets more detail. And by setting out the various priorities under each of these strategic directions, you, your taxpayers, your citizens and residents of Modi can see what the council is actually concentrating on. So in, on the economy, you're talking about inclusive growth, you're talking about population growth, you're reflecting that the fisheries is one of the most important industries that the region has. You're dealing with your tourism, culture, and heritage assets. And you're talking, you're dealing with two things that are very important to local residents, and that is the continued work on cell service and internet. Of course, both of these being continuity from the previous plan, so continuing to make considerable progress. And then people is, I think, a really important theme, because it talks about, you know, the strength of any community, any organization is its people. And so it reflects that, that theme, telegraphs diversity and inclusion. Trevor, you, Deputy Warden, had brought forward, you know, interest in the area of placemaking, talking about, you know, a more work-life balance thing here with, on the one hand, supporting business success and business growth, on the other hand, reflecting that you live in a beautiful area, and you're also trying to build recreation opportunities for citizens. Some of the things around alignment with the provincial legislation in a few areas, the Accessibility Act, putting a marker down on diversity and inclusion, developing, and, you know, placemaking can, as you develop this policy, placemaking can become a bit of a filter for all council activities in terms of if you're, you know, approving new programming, that sort of thing, Recreation and Active Living. Get into stewardship, and stewardship is a nice theme in a contemporary context. But you're doing some very, very specific things under here, like your asset management plan, protecting the environment, natural assets, the whole issue of, we saw that, that knockdown of the, the hack of the pipeline in the US last weekend, and the ripple it's caused through the economy in terms of price of gas and access to fuel and so forth. And so these are, this issue of cybersecurity and enhanced digital, digital infrastructure is a really important contemporary issue. And then the old bugbear, the challenges around intermunicipal agreements. So putting some markers down both here and in the next section on, you know, trying to process improve and make those work better for, to the advantage of citizens. And then governance, I think everywhere today, citizens are looking for, you know, how their tax dollars are being spent, how governance is being undertaken. And so this puts in context some of the things that the municipality is going to do proactive legislative agenda. Strong approach, excuse me, strong approach to regional governance, those sorts of things. And so in each of these, you have objectives for year one. The idea with these strategic plans is that you're updating them, usually fully updating them on a year wide base, on a yearly basis. So, you know, as things come, are accomplished, they come off here, and a new objective is put in place. We've also paid attention to measurement and, and metrics. And again, Modi is probably a best practice model in terms of the way in which it takes and transmits its strategic plan into, into the action register. The one thing that we didn't, we held off putting on this to get direction from you, often, and not always, but often, these have a closing page or a page at the front, right behind the title page, where the council signs off on the plan. So the warden, the deputy warden, and then the counselors each sign off on the plan. I like it better at the end as opposed to the beginning. But, and in some organizations don't do that at all. So that would be an item of discretion if, if this council would like to, to do that, we, we could certainly build that into the, into the, wherever you want to put it. So overall, I think, I'm hoping you'll feel that, that this actually, you know, accurately reflects our discussions. We've been really careful to make sure that it did that. We worked with, following the session, we worked with the Victorias and, and the team on many of these final directions in terms of objectives and so forth, were developed in, by, by the staff team who had the most knowledge about, you know, where things are at the present time. And we did a little bit of editorial work on it, but not, not a great deal. So these really came from, all of the objectives really came from the, from your team. So I think with that, and recognizing the opportunity of your time, Warden, I, I would stop there, offer, you know, ask my colleagues if there's anything I've missed here to, to jump in and hit them, but otherwise to turn it over to council to get your thoughts and, and feedback and input on.
Trevor? Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation. And thank you to all council for our collaboration during the strategic planning session. It was fantastic to be together in person. And unfortunately, we've gone, gone back into, you know, a situation that, that we can't meet in person, but it was really, really good during the time we were able to, to get together and do this hard work and valuable work. What I will say is that the population growth piece is important, because without a growing population, it is challenging to, you know, move forward in terms of, of increasing the desirability of a community. So really, we've got to keep our eye on that metric. And also, I was really, I'm really pleased over the last number of years that we really moved into, you know, more of a data-driven series of decisions and decision-making schema sort of. And also the Action Register, our CAO monthly updates us as to where staff is and where the municipality is in terms of fulfilling the direction of council. So all in all, excellent plan. I'm looking forward to bringing it fully to fruition. Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else? Sherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I, you know, but concur with Deputy Warden Cunningham, you know, great collaborative effort on all of our parts and, you know, and putting this all together, a couple of And, you know, and putting this all together, a couple of things. And I know I come from, I think from a council point of view, this is all new to me. But from an admin point of view, just a couple of things I would like to point out. We need to make sure we're consistent with bullets because there's some objectives that have bullets and some that don't. And then there are some, I know this is really niggly, but if we're putting this out to the public, it needs to be as clean as possible. And there are some places where at the beginning of the bullet, there are capitals and some that there aren't. And there's just a minor, a few minor ones of those. And the other comment, and I, I know this might sound petty, but I see all of the pictures seem to revolve around Cape for shoe and our ocean. And although I know that that is very important to us, I think that, you know, to Trevor's point, Deputy Warden's point about placemaking, we have lots of trails and recreation and lakes and rivers and all of those things that, you know, maybe we could replace a couple of those pictures. And I'm not sure how many people are even going to look at those pictures. But when I saw, my first thing, even before I looked at any of the words was it looks like everything has to do with fishing. And although I understand fishing is a very important part of our economy, it is one of our, our priorities. I just think maybe we could, you know, substitute one of the pictures from the ocean to a river or a lake or recreation of some, of some sort. But other than that, I think, you know, it's, it's good. I think it's a lot to live up to, a lot for us to accomplish in the next five years. But up for, up for the task for at least the next three and a half. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Sherry. Anyone else? I don't see everybody else. I see is Lauren, Patty, Daniel and Sherry. I don't see anyone else. So if there's nothing more, I, I'd like to make mention that Sherry, you're absolutely right. That I never really thought of that until you pointed it out in regards to pictures all focused on, on the fishing industry. And I'm not trying to belittle or minimalize what that industry means to us. We all know that that's the economic engine of our area. However, we do have other areas as well. Inland, inland trails, rails to trail, some of that's beautiful this time of year with all the apple blossoms that are starting to come out and lakes and rivers. And we have such a diverse area and to focus on one particular point is, is not really doing the area justice. So yeah, I agree with that. I never really noticed that until you pointed it out. So thank you for that. So I guess the next steps, I'm going to have to turn the floor over to the C E O. The next step would be, in my assumption would be with those couple little tweaks that were noted, that we would have to move this forward to regular council for acceptance.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Now, there was a question posed by Ron in terms of if you'd like to have a signature page. So if council would like to see that, then we will include that in the document that will get linked to the council agenda at the end of the month. So, Mr. Chair, likely if council is satisfied that this represents what you intend to endorse at the end of the month, then perhaps a motion to recommend it to council is in order.
Yeah, I see the deputy warden's hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my view on the signature page is, and we can have additional conversation about this prior to coming to council. But I, I, I would, I would generally not want to include a signature page. Only because then, you know, in, in the future, although this is a critically important document and that would be a reason for putting it certainly there or within the, at the end of the document. I think, I think it's a slippery slope in terms of, you know, then deciding what documents have our signature and so forth. I, I think approval process at the council table is probably adequate in, in my view. But again, if somebody had a different argument or a more compelling argument, I could certainly be sweet. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't see councillor Durkey or councillor.
Yeah, Patty here. I agree with Trevor. I prefer not to have the signature page for reasons that he has said. I don't need to go into any more detail, but.
So I guess what I'm hearing so far is just a majority vote in, in a regular council meeting. That would suffice rather. So hearing that, if everyone's happy with the document, I guess I'd entertain a motion to move this to a regular council for, for approval, acceptance and or approval. Lauren?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move this document to the regular council for approval.
All right, motion on the floor by councillor Cushing. Do I have a second or? I don't see all of you. Seconded by deputy warden. So a motion on the floor to move this to regular council for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And thank you very much to Amy, Corinne, Ron and Tom for, for all your hard work and due diligence. I, I couldn't imagine trying to figure out how to put together a document like this with seven different opinions sitting around the table. Although all our opinions weren't all that different, but thank you very much. Appreciate it. And have a good day, I guess. Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
All right, moving on. Five point two, draft capital investment plan and operating budget. Mr. Gregory Shay, you have the floor.
Great. Okay, everyone. Good morning. I'm not sure if there's any particular order you want to proceed in. We can take a look at the capital investment plan first, I guess, since it's listed first. I think you probably all have had it circulated and it's in your documents. It's a one-page document at this point. So you want to have it in front of them?
Yes, thanks, Greg.
Okay, so this capital investment plan is the culmination of many meetings and discussions over the course of the past few months with staff and council and trying to reflect the objectives of council. And we've talked a little bit about strategic plans and making things fit and sync up with that as well. This looks like a very aggressive plan on its face. The total spend, planned spend for Modi is, you can see is 6.5 million. But there's a couple of notes on that, I think, that are worth making. Even though Modi, it looks like we plan on making the investments in each of those individual line items. Not all of those are expected to be spent in one year. Some of those projects do span multiple years. I think that's an important note to make. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, council and municipality continue to be committed in, in the assets that are originally based. Two of our largest investments you can see on this document are in the ferry terminal activity and Mariner Center. And then following from that, we have some good-sized investments now in active transportation and sidewalks. So I think it addresses a lot of the objectives that are in the strategic plan. It is aggressive. But another note to make is that there's no debenturing that is contemplated at this stage. So that's important to think to note from our planning, financial planning perspective. And I think, thinking about this this morning and looking at it some more, what I'm going to propose, because it's, it looks a little bit aggressive and daunting on its face with the total investment that's contemplated of 6.5 million, wherein some of these projects span multiple years. I think what I'd like to propose before, when we go forward to approve the plan, is to add another column to the right of this one for you. And that column will show the actual year's planned spend, which will be more modest and a little bit more easier to understand, I think, than being overwhelmed by the large numbers that you see on the total global budget for each of those line items. Other than that, that's really all there is to offer for that. The other thing to note, I guess, finally on the capital investment plan is that the funding is sourced from different reserves. So this is a little mix in this as well. There is obviously some capital reserve funds that are earmarked for this, these projects. There's gas tax funds. Some of these projects are financed like the ferry terminal, for example, under the operating reserve fund. And finally, new to us now is the COVID reserve fund, which you'll see on this as well. The COVID reserve is intended more for operational items related to COVID, but it is a reserve fund we have to earmark and account for separately. So we've included in this for, for accountability and transparency. So those are really all the remarks I had to offer on the capital investment plan. Again, if it's acceptable, I would like to add a fourth column to the right there for the final document to show you clearly what the planned spend is in for 21, 22.
All right, so everyone, you, you heard the operating, operating investment plan, or sorry, the operating budget that was proposed by Greg. And then he had a request in there to add a fourth line item. So what is the wishes of council? Do you wish to? I personally think it's a good idea. It, for me, it would clarify things a little bit. So what's everyone's wishes on that? I seen two thumbs up, three. So I guess that's by consensus, Greg, to add a fourth, a fourth line in there.
Okay, I'll do that. I'd be happy to do that. And I think it will add a little bit of clarity. And just one final note is, you know, some of these, a lot, a lot of these project budget numbers, which are reflected in the first column, are estimates. And so we don't want to send out any mixed signals or make any preconceived notions about the actual final costs. Or some of these projects, they are estimates based on the best information that we have. And there are partners in some of those other projects too, and other funding opportunities to fund some of those projects. So those just, just has to be taken in mind that there are, these are estimates for the large part and subjects to change as we get closer to actual project completion.
Okay, Patty, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. I know glasses on, glasses off. The Cape for shoe, the 35,000 by others, could you just clarify what that is, please?
We are hoping to receive some funding from the province's accessibility stream this year to help with the look-off build project. Again, we've made an application, but it's not been determined whether we receive the funds or not. So that, again, that's an example of where we're making some projections and some estimations. But these are not always firmed up until a little bit later on in the year when contracts are concluded or awards are given.
Okay, thank you very much.
So is there any more questions on the operating budget that Greg has put forward? So if not, I guess I'm going to do this separately, Greg. I guess I entertain a motion to move forward the operating budget to regular council then.
Sorry, John, not to criticize, but I believe it's our, this is our capital budget, not operating.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at two different things. Yeah, so thank you for correcting on me on that. So I guess I would entertain a motion to move that part of the, the budget forward to regular council for, for approval. So is anyone willing to make that motion? Move by councillor Allen. Do I have a second or? Move by councillor Hurliburton. So motion on the floor to move this part forward to regular council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, Greg, you have the floor again.
Thank you. The next thing we'll do is just take a walkthrough or a draft operating budget. Again, the culmination of many months of work and several meetings with both staff and council. So I'm going to, you know, we're not here to get into the weeds, but I will highlight the, the subtotals in each of the cap, the total for each of the subcategories that make up the total budget. And then we'll, we'll see what happens from there in discussion. There are some assumptions, of course, that are fundamental to every budget development process. We, you know, we base our budget based on the best information we can gather from a variety of sources and from discussions with staff and from experience. And of course, one of the major assumptions in this budget is that the tax rates are unchanged for these calculations at this point in the game. So if we'll start at the top, and I believe you all have that in front of you as well. On the revenue section, the total budget for total assessable property this year is 10,280,457. The special assessments, essentially sewer accounts, is 287,740. The business property revenue budget is 315,329,000. And other taxes is 263,531. So the total budgeted tax revenues for the year are 11,147,057. Grants and lieu and taxes are budgeted to be 37,200. Services to other governments are budgeted at 460,984. And revenue from open sources is 899,860. Total unconditional transfers from other governments is budgeted at 151,243. And conditional transfers from other governments is budgeted at 510,369. We've also budgeted this year transfers from other funds, which in this case largely represents, again, the COVID resort reserve fund of 117,650. So the total non-tax revenue budget is 2,177,306. And that brings our total projected operating revenues to 13,324,363. On the, on the expenditure side of the operating budget, we start at general government services. And we have legislative at 298,021. We have general administration, 1,036,795. Financial management, 56,855. Taxation is 296,147. And other general government services is 357,308. So the total subtotal for the total general government services category is 2,45,126. In protective services, we have 1,234,258, essentially policing corrections. Fire protection, 1,110,283. Emergency measures, 60,577. Other protective services, development inspection essentially is 336,345. We have animal pest control at 29,745. So the total for the, for the protective services category is 2,771,208. We have budgeted in transportation services, road transport, 700, or sorry, 479,945. Streetlights, 64,530. Public works department, 533,059. So the total transportation and public works is 1,077,535. Environmental health, we have sewage collection and disposal at 1,234,076. So that's the total for environmental health. And then in public health services, we have 229,178. We've budgeted for environmental development, essentially planning and bylaw development, 141,744. And industrial parks, 105,728. Other environmental development services, we budgeted 298,988. So the total environmental development subcategory is 546,460. Recreation has been budgeted at 771,984 and culture and heritage to 35,500. So total culture and rec, 807,484. In fiscal services, we have budgeted for interest on debt service of 107,222. Principal repayments on long-term debt, which are treated as an expenditure in municipal accounting on the operating side are 359,996. And transfers to own reserves, we have budgeted 1,120,000. In conditional transfers to other governments, the budgeting is 2,983,910. And then we have a contingency item of 25,000 to round out the fiscal services. So the fiscal services total is 4,596,128. This brings the budgeted total operating expenditures for the year 21, 22 to 13,307,000, 307,195, which leaves us a very modest surplus of 17,168. It's very consistent to the previous year's projected surplus. It's very consistent to the previous year's projected surplus. So that's the operating draft budget where we are today. I guess we'll entertain questions if there are any or comments, but that's where we're at.
Go ahead councillor Durkey. Then I seen, I think councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg, one of the things I would like you to explain so the public understand is you always talk about the importance of. Of our reserve and in this budget, we have a mill, over a million dollars going to, to reserves. So could you explain why, why we do that and the importance, just so that the public understand that?
Well, the reserves are necessary to fund other types of activities that are planned for the municipality. And most typically it has to do with capital investment. We talked about the capital investment plan earlier. And, and the reserves are a way to transfer funds and earmark them for future investments in capital assets. And other projects like regional investments. So while we don't, we do not, the municipality of Yarmouth presently does not budget and tax rate tax for depreciation or amortization. Which is typically done to account for building up equity for future capital investments. A rough proxy in the municipal world is to transfer funds to your capital reserves. To make up for the, 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 the expected future spend on capital asset replacement and renewal and new investments. So your assets are wearing down over their lifetime and their life expectancy is continuing to shorten. So we want to continue to make sure we put enough funds aside. And that's, that number is roughly approximated by your traditional amortization number that you see on some other more. Profit oriented financial statements. So in this world, we try to account for that and make a, make an adjustment and allowance for that through the capital reserve investment fund. And so that's why each year we put away a significant amount of money in that fund to keep it balanced and keep it, keep it full as much as we can. To refund our capital investment. Projections and budgets going forward. That's that. And that's in essence what the capital reserve fund as well. This is what's intended to do.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that you gave that explanation. I think it would be beneficial for everyone to hear that.
Turn my mute button off. I have my printer going. It's the reason why I went on mute. Is there any other questions or comments in regards to this? Councillor Durkey?
Thank you. There was some consulting services that. I'm, that we have used and I'm just wondering where in the budget that, that's reserved or that amount is included?
The consulting services will show up in the legislative section of your operating expenditures. General Government Services Legislative. They will be in a couple of different places depending on precisely what the consulting service is intended to provide. They'll be either in administrative planning and strategy, or they'll be in council, public relations and media. So it depends a little bit on the type of service that's being delivered. But they'll be in one of those two categories.
Okay, thanks.
Anymore? I'm going to follow up Greg with Patty's question in regards to consulting services. This year it was, oh, is that, that figure be a little bit more? Where exactly was that again? I was looking again for.
That's in online 3803. In the legislative section of your operating budget, we've budgeted $65,000 this year.
Yeah, just because it's budgeted, it doesn't mean it's spent. That's.
That's, this is a budget. There's nothing spent out of the budget until the budget's approved. So, but that is where the, that's where that. That budget item resides. And that's, that's not all consulting. That's a, it's a variety of. Council, I guess, or general municipal related to public relations activity. It includes besides consulting, things like the participation in remembrance days and New Years. And communications with the residents through newsletters and things like that. So. It's, it's, it's again, as what it says, it's public relations and media. And there is a consulting component to that this year as well. And that's 65,000 that you see.
Is there any more questions? For councillor Durkey?
Yeah, I just find that that's a significant amount of money that, that, and I'm wondering if, you know, we can pare that down a bit. If that's actually necessary at this point. And I'm not sure if this is where we discuss, but we are talking about operating. So. That's, I'm wondering if we can pair.
Is here to take your instruction. We're basing the budget on information we've received. It's, it's, you know, it's your decision on, on where you want to go with some of these things. Some of them are obviously we get handed to us and told we have to spend. But in this particular case, there's some discretion. That we're basing these numbers on discussions we've had to date. If there's a change of heart or a change of mind. It's, you know, you have to have discussed them amongst yourselves and then provide instruction to staff.
Deputy Warden, sorry councillor Durkey, were you finished? Okay, Deputy Ward, you have the floor.
Yeah, I mean, we have had conversations, working sessions and so forth to bring the, bring the budget forward. And while the number is significant. I think there is, is reason for, for the number. We wanted to in the strategic plan communicate better with our public. And my understanding and, and is that, is that we had, we had. You know, certainly wanted to communicate, be more transparent. And also, you know, work more strategically. We've got a number of really, really important. And significant. Projects on the go, including the lighthouse, including the Milo stretch. There will be a requirement to do work around those pieces. To, to work with the public. So that was part of the reason my understanding is, is that the, that, that the budget was a bit bigger there. And again, we're trying to do things in a more data-driven manner. So I, I think we should leave the number there.
All right, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess maybe just to support the conversation with a little more clarity. So up to 65,000. With respect to consulting, it's, it's less than 20,000 of the 65 that's being proposed to be set aside should council need any consulting advisory services. The remainder of the money is really focused around our, our internal communications plan. And one of the big pieces we're investing in this year that we haven't invested in before is translation of the electronic newsletter. So that it's available in both English and French. So we're going to do that twice a year. So just, just to support the conversation. So people understand, you know, of the 65,000. What is, what is being set aside should council need some external consulting services?
Thank you for that. Deputy Warden and Deputy Warden, once you have the, the floor, I gotta step away for a second. I guess afterwards, if there was no more questions, a motion to forward the operating budget to council. So if you could, if you're done.
I will, I will indeed. Yes, to, to the warden's point, and I think this has been brought up, this is a budget. So the dollars haven't been expended. So. I mean, my recommendation is to keep the number there and we can have a more fulsome discussion. Of whether or not we want to spend any or all of that $20,000. Moving forward, it's simply in the budget and, you know, that's been the, the recommendation of staff in our conversation at this point. So there's no. You know, if there's, if there's a reason to spend the dollars that, that, you know, we deem fit as time goes on through the, through the fiscal week we can. And if not, then, then we certainly shouldn't. So having said that, and the chair stepped away, is there any additional comment on, on the budget? Or any additional questions before we make a motion to move it to council? Councillor question?
I have one, Trevor. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Warden. As you, as you mentioned in Greg's mission, this, this is a, a budget. There are no money spent of the budget until the budget is approved. Number one. Number two, in order for us to operate as a unit, we have to have a budget. Whether we spend all that money or not is irrelevant at this point, surely, right? If, if it comes to the point, I'd rather have. To be, laugh about it words, I'd rather have too much than not enough. If we never had enough money in a certain category, we had to come back council and ask you for more money. It would, it would show that we're not being very responsible in building the budget. So I think it's very important to have that budget number there. Any of the budget numbers that Greg has and staff have done. And we have reviewed and, and. And question nine, I think it's a, you know, they've done, they've done a great job and. They're very experienced in this, in this role. And I would say we should just leave things as is and, and. And bring it to the council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Question? Any additional comment before, before this emotion? Okay, not seeing anybody. So if I could have a motion to move the operating budget to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Make that motion to move in this operating budget to our next council meeting?
Okay, we've got a mover and law in a second or in Daniel? All those, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I might have to be stepping in and out here.
That's fine. Yeah.
All right. So Greg. Is, do you have any more recommendations?
No, thanks. That concludes my section, I think, of your agenda. So I'll step out from here and rest you have a good day.
Thanks, Greg.
Madam CEO, did you put up your hand to speak or just waving by?
I was just waving by and thanking Greg for his work.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on. Item number six, correspondence for action. We all have in front of us a letter from the Canadian Federation of Independent Business. And that was regarding. Let me pull it up here. I have it in paper form. They would like us to recommend to follow a key element in any construction mitigation policy. To try to, to help business and, and move things along. So Madam CEO, do you have any more to add on that?
Mr. Chair, so I guess I'll share that council is contemplating. A number of active transportation projects in Port Maitland and Hebron and Dayton. You're in the, you're in a design phase to explore that possible opportunity. And so I would suggest that if, if you do decide to move ahead with the capital projects. When we tender the documents, we include some language that would require the construction firm to provide for a business interruption mitigation plan. Just, just because, you know, we understand that it's important to make these investments, but we, we don't want any more unintended consequences than necessary. So I think it's a small piece that we could include in our tender documents and kind of tick that box.
Counselors, Deputy Warden?
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. We, we, we are largely rural district, obviously. And some of the, some of the complicating factors of building infrastructure aren't as great as obviously in an urban or more populated or downtown type area, I know. But, but it is definitely, I think, wise to, to do that. You know, the, the proposed sidewalks are in Port Maitland and then, which has a school and so forth. So that, that's important. And also certainly in the, the Hebron Dayton area. Lots of, you know, a number of businesses there and so forth. But again, there's, 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 it's, it's, it's not kind of like the downtown Yarmouth where they ran into a little bit of. Little bit issue around business interruption. It is not that type of scenario. So I'm not anticipating a lot of business interruption, but I think we should try to have a plan mitigate any, any that may occur. Thank you.
Any more discussion on this? Madam CEO, just a matter of process. So I guess with, with what the deputy warden had, had brought up. Would we need this via motion to regular council to include that in, in any contracts?
I, I would recommend that we do do this by motion. It provides clarity. There, you know, there could be small price implications if it's in the tender documents. And so without a motion of council, I would hesitate to put something like that in a legal document.
All right. Is someone willing to make a motion to that effect to move this to regular council? Deputy Warden?
Yes, I'll, I'll move that. We move this item to regular council for conversation approval. And just for clarity sake, that we would include in any tender, tendering process. You know, a, a business interruption. Plan is being part of, being part of the proposal to, to the, from the vendor to the municipality district.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or? Seconded by councillor Allen. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on. 6.1.2 Request for funding from the Tri-County Women's Center. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in your package council, there was a request from Tri-County Women's Center. And in the letter, they specify that they're approaching you outside of your grants policy. So I don't have a framework for moving this forward outside of specific direction from you on the matter.
In the discussion, I see councillor Sherry Hurlibur. You have your hand up?
Thank you. I'm not sure what the proper process, but I know one of my first council meetings, we had. An application come through outside of the regular grant funding stream. And I was, I think I publicly voiced that I think that, you know, when we have. Funding requests that can fall within that grant funding stream that they should go there. I know that this request is asking for continual support, but I think that. When we look going through the, you know, grant process, you know, in the last couple of weeks, it's been, you know, an eye opener for me. And I appreciate that we, you know, do have money to support our community organizations. And I think, you know, when I look at what we have left in our contingency, I just think that for me. Saying that it's an ongoing where we have other applications that we review on every year that are, you know. Repetitive, you know, you know. So I guess for me, I'm not, I, I would be in favor of supporting them through the regular grant stream. And we do have, you know, a contingency left there that we haven't, we haven't finally approved our, you know, grant funding. But for me, I just think it needs to fall within our regular grant stream. Thank you.
Councillor Nick Hilton? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, we, we talked about this in the grant. Grants meeting in Tri-County Women's Center is a, a unique organization in our community and. I struggle being a new councillor to know what's right when you get these requests because they all seem right. And you want to support them all. But again, we're limited in funding. But I was wondering if maybe to understand what they, and I think we talked about it at that time. Understanding what they do in the services they provide and some of the. Some of the complicated complications or issues that they face, maybe they could. Maybe we can invite them to present to council on what exactly they're looking for. Cause again, Tri-County Women's Center doesn't, it's not the same. A recreation group. They do serious work for our residents and I'd like to hear more from them.
Excellent point, councillor Hilton. And I think you read my mind in regards to have a presentation from Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, so this letter is from the Tri-County Women's Center. Council does have an application under the grant policy from the Tri-County. Pregnancy. A different group. They're not exactly the same group. I'm just going to go look. Yes. So you received an application.
You are correct.
Pregnancy Care Center. And, and, but this is from the Tri-County Women's Center. So they're slightly different organizations and, and you're quite right, councillor Hilton. Where we would be developing a new relationship with them on this level. Where we would be developing a new relationship with them on this level, a presentation might help you understand their mandate more.
So is there any more discussion on this? So what I've heard is is maybe that that we want to give direction to staff to reach out to the Tri-County Women's Center to make a presentation in a future date is is what I've heard so far. Deputy Warden and then Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. I mean, the the organization does a lot of good work and it's and it's definitely needed and and maybe even more so on times of COVID, unfortunately. Having said that, I think that, you know, if we had a presentation, we're under understand a little bit more about certainly their mandate, but also about their financial need. I think that would would allow us to make a better decision and support them in in a better way.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Mr. Warden. Let's not put aside how important this group really is to the young women and women in our in the Tri-Counties. And I think it's very essential that we look at supporting such a such a group. There's always a need for for that type of support in everyday life. The Tri-County Pregnancy Group, I know, very familiar with them. They do a wonderful job with with the young women with with young women. And and I think this group here is is it's been around for a few years now. I don't think that that long. I don't believe I said a few years. And I think it's important that we do have a discussion with them. And in let's not is not let's not put it aside sort of to to not give them a grant. That's what our contingency is there for. And I believe it's very important that we certainly hear what they had, listen to what they have to say and consider them as an ongoing thing in the near in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurlibur.
Thank you. Just to follow up to my point, I wasn't saying we shouldn't fund them. I just think that I know that we do have money in our contingency plan. And I think that there is value in this, you know, great value in this organization, and they do good work for not only women, but, you know, you know, the greater community. So I think that if there is a way even before the presentation to move this forward for it to be part of our final grant. Our final grant approval at the end of the month, I think that 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 would be valuable. Or, and I'm not sure what the the correct process is, if after we do, we do approve our grant funding at the end of the month, we can add them in as part of the contingency money.
Counselor Patty Dirkie. You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am just wondering, I noticed that there's no budget attached to it. So I'm wondering if we can ask them for their budget and a specific amount so that we can address that sooner rather than later.
Counselor Nick Hilton and the CEO.
I'll give way to the CEO. I feel like she's gonna maybe make my point.
Mr. Chair, if it pleases council, what we'll do then is correspond with the center and we'll we'll have them fill out the grant application, which will provide the financial disclosure piece that you've referenced. And we'll also ask them to kind of stipulate, you know, if they were to receive funding from council, how how would they use it? So we can absolutely go ahead and get that done and bring it to you by by the end of the month. If if that's what you want, we'll ask for it by the end of the month. If for some reason it doesn't come in by the end of the month, you do you do have that contingency. So, you know, your options to support them wouldn't necessarily be negatively impacted.
Anymore?
That was my point.
I I want to make a point. I I do know some about this organization, but I don't know exactly what they do or what their needs are. Before I would commit anything, I would prefer personally a a presentation by the by the organization. I I understand the need to to reach out and help all you can, but that contingency that that we do have. That was that's meant for for the whole year. And I we don't know what's going to come before us in in other years, but I would prefer. And I'm not saying that I don't support the Tri-County Women's Center. And there's also a little bit confusion with the Tri-County Pregnancy organization. I don't know if they're the same. I don't know they're different. And and those are some things that I'd really like to know before I'd make any commitment at all. Because I don't know if the organization's double dipping. It's ignorance on my part, but I would prefer a a presentation by by the organization before I move forward with any funding decisions. And also, they're asking for funding on top of their core services, yearly funding, so that that's what concerns me a little bit. I'll I'll leave it there because I see a handout. Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Yes, sir. Both groups are they're not connected at all. The Tri-County Pregnancy Group is totally a different organization, and they provide a different different types of services. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So what is the wishes of council on this request? I'd entertain a motion on on the direction to give stop because I'm a little unsure. Counselor Nick Hilton.
Well, I'd make a motion that we invite the Tri-County Women's Center to present to council at the next available council meeting that they can attend. And also, maybe you want to approve that motion first. Second.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried. Counselors Sherry Hurlibur, you had your hand up with a piece of paper. It was white. I don't. Was it green?
It's green. My I have to explain. My cards fell behind my desk and I can't move my desk, so I have no way to get my card. So I'm going to get staff maybe to make me some new ones, but I I have no way to physically move my desk to get my card. So the mother, the necessity was green, but then I realized it's backwards. So just.
All right. I just wanted to because I was going to say I didn't know if the motion was carried unanimously or not. So so apparently the motion was carried unanimously. But we got to have some fun here, right? Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Second to that, could we maybe provide that staff to direction like the CEO mentioned to have them fill out the grants application with some budget information? They've asked for well, they've asked us to put towards a significant amount of money overall budget for them. So I would, I'd like to know a little bit more about them. And through that process, that would help us make a decision when the time comes.
All right. So you're just giving that a stop direction or?
I don't think it needs to be a motion. It sounds like, or does it? No, directions.
If.
Go ahead, Madam, CEO.
Yeah, if it's direction, that's fine. But I would just like Zoom is hard to get a read on everybody. So if it's just maybe hold up our cards that we agree with that or whatever.
I was going to go around the table with that. So put up your green cards if you're you're in favor of that recommendation or direction to stop. And I do see Counselor Hurlibur is green, so it's unanimous. Counselor Hurlibur, you could do what I did the other day. I hid a green squeaky toy and a and a red Santa hat is what I used to. Yeah, that that's close. That looks green to me. All right, everyone. Is there any more on on that item and the request for funding from the Crowded Counties Women's Center? I'm very happy actually to 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 hear a a presentation from them because I'm actually ignorant on on some of the things that they might do for the community. So I'm looking forward to that one, actually. Soon as we can set that up, we'll get that on the agenda. All right, item six point two for information. You all have in there four pieces from its arbitration, Community Health Board, Municipal Affairs, 12-month notice, and the Safe Restart Fund Quick Reference Guide. Deputy Warden.
Yeah, just for clarity's sake, I think we need to make a motion correct on appointing somebody to the fence arbitration committee. Or am I confused?
Madam, CEO. Then Counselor Hilton.
So to the Deputy Warden's question, so that letter is confirming who the Federation of Agriculture has appointed to that committee as required. And so earlier on, council gave direction for me to appoint a staff person to sit. So that will be our two-person committee. It'll be an individual from staff and this individual from the Federation of Agriculture.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for providing that clarification.
Counselor Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was I was willing to make that motion. The recommendation is for Evan Kleiner to join the committee. And I know Evan personally and what he brings to the community and just wanted to welcome him to the team. So thank you very much.
He was actually up on my mom and dad's property fixing the fences for him and his dad's animals. So very good, very good choice. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven, old business.
Your chair, this is Sherry. Could we through you to this Madam, CEO, could we just have a quick recap on the Safe Restart Quick Reference Guide? I know that we've had lots of discussion in the last few months on what we're allowed to spend it on. And when I read through that, it seemed for me in my head, it seemed more limited than what I was thinking we were going to be able to. I'd like to hear maybe our staff and maybe our other counselors thoughts on that that document. Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Chair and Counselor Hurlibur. So our conversations, you're quite right. What staff had shared with council was the content of of some webinars. And I think Counselor Dirkie, too, through her seat as a board member of NSFM, had participated in some webinars. And so the 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 information that we received verbally through those webinars included some question and answer sessions. And so administrators and elected officials had questions about areas that that the plan is silent on. And in particular, we were concerned with some pieces around capital. And we were also concerned with, you know, what would be the requirement to defend decision making on the spend and what would be the reporting metrics and and so forth. And so we do have this documentation does actually put in writing and of particular value is page two of the package, which basically takes you through a decision making workflow. So is the expense incurred due to COVID-19? So right out of the gate, it's got to specifically and directly relate to COVID-19. If not, we can't use our safe restart money. Is it an operating expense? If not, then we can't use safe restart money. If it is operating, then we go through a series of questions around. There's a special segment of safe restart funding funding that's in intended for transit. And the District of Yarmouth doesn't have transit, so we we don't have any money in that stream at all to flow. So then we we come down through, you know, is it for personal protective equipment? Was the expense incurred to implement social social distancing, infection prevention and control? And so we have actually a very significant line item there. The amendments we made to council chambers in order to meet safely in person, that that expense will flow through that category. Have you experienced increased operating pressure due to decreased revenues? So our contribution to the Mariner Center would fall there. Our our municipal contribution there has been impacted by the fact that the Mariner Center has had downward pressure on their ability to raise revenue. So you're you're quite right. We we now have, you know, some fairly specific clarity around how we can use the money. We still don't understand how long the money can sit in reserves, you know, COVID is not over yet, and and the impacts will probably roll out for the next little while. And we still don't have any information on kind of if there will be if there will be any indication that, you know, we'll have to give the money back, you know, our feeling is 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 no, we won't. Now, what we did receive internally, and I know this is getting a bit into the weeds, but I will share it. Every year, municipal government has to submit a a series of documents and paperwork back to the province. It's called Financial Information Return. And those are prescribed forms that we get from the province, and it outlines how council has stewarded the financial resources over the course of the year. So we did receive an additional worksheet that will go with that package. It's called FER, Financial Information Return. And it will track the spend of the safe restart money. So the money sits in what we call deferred revenue. And as we bring it into the operating budget, like was presented to you today, to use for allowable expenses, then we we bring it out of deferred revenue and we flow it through the operating budget. And so that form, that additional form we got this year will just provide for our tracking for those activities.
Thank you very much.
All right, was there any more? Moving on, item seven, old business, seven point one confirmation of municipal grants.
So, Mr. Chair, because it's in draft form, we had previously circulated what we feel was a summary of council's work in the draft in the in the workshop. And so we present it to you, and we're seeking confirmation of this as part of the recommendation to move your operating budget forward to council.
All right. So what I'm hearing from you, Madam, CEO, is you need a motion to move this forward to the regular council meeting for approval. Deputy Warden.
Right, I'll move that it is part of the operating budget that we move forward to council, the operating grants is 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 noted in the in the draft of the of the of the community grants. Sorry, I meant the community grants.
No, second.
Regular council.
Yeah. Motion on the floor, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that motion at all? I will say this, it was a lot of hard work. It was it was quite long and and some might consider tedious. And I'd also like to thank the deputy warden for chairing that meeting. I couldn't share it because I was doing it from home or sorry, I was when the meeting started, I was actually still at work and I just let him continue on. And thank you very much, everyone, for your honest and blunt discussion. It was it's very hard to to during grant time. That's one of the most difficult things that I find as a counselor is going through that document. In the future, I do know that some counselors had mentioned that maybe there's a way that we can tweak the process down the road. We can certainly discuss that. It doesn't have to be done now, obviously, but in a future meeting, I I have this down in my notes of things that maybe we should talk about in a future committee, the whole. And maybe we can tweak this process to to make it a little bit easier or not necessarily easier, but maybe a little bit more fair, maybe having a little bit better metric matrix to to follow. So that's my only comment on it. So is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, entertain a question. Motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item seven point two, discussion on Bill forty-seven. You all have that in your package, seven point two point one, a letter from the municipal office that I just recently signed. This item was asked, Madam, CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think you were just about to say what I was going to share. So this is being brought forward as a result of a previous committee of the whole meeting. And and since that committee of the whole meeting, written the letter that's attached in your package. Basically, you know, just just once again, reiterating council's concern around process and and meaningful engagement. So I'm not sure if there's further action items that council wishes to address on on Bill forty-seven. But I, you know, I remain at your disposal if if there's further action you'd like to take.
I I kind of be curious to wait to see what the response is on that because that letter was was quite quite clear that we agree with critical appointments on the accessibility of all Nova Scotia's by 2030. It's 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 just the way that the process works sometimes. So I'm I'm just, I'd be waiting for the response from Minister McGuire on on this letter that we sent. So if there's no more further action that council wishes to take, then we'll move on. I don't see any, so we'll move on. Item seven point three, testing at code, sorry, COVID testing at Mariner Center. This was added as per the April twenty-eighth meeting. And I can't remember who brought that up. I can't remember if it was Counselor Hilton or Counselor Hurlibur. I think it was Counselor Hurlibur now that she has her hand up. Counselor Hurlibur, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just to follow up to ensure that when and I I understand the significance of COVID testing, but I think the way that it played out with a property that we.
a property that we have joint partner, you know, joint ownership in, I think maybe, I don't know if it was, you know, lack of, you know, just trying to get it out there to the residents, but it just seemed disjointed. And I know that it, it is our building, and we do have, you know, a manager who takes care of that. But I, I was just concerned that the Department of Health says one thing, and then we, the municipality or the center are saying another thing. And I guess I was just concerned that we need to make sure our, our residents were really impacted by this. I think that, you know, the intent was good, but I think the follow-through maybe wasn't where it should have been. And I don't know what, if there's anything from a municipal level that we can do. I just think that, I know that I've had, you know, feedback from our residents that said, I was supposed to go there, then I wasn't supposed to go there. And I know that it is just our building and the Department of, you know, Health was responsible for the testing. But just somehow in the future, just being mindful that when things are happening there, that we try to make sure that there is clear and concise, you know, from, from an ownership point of view. But again, understanding that department, it was a moving target, and we were trying to do, you know, the government was trying to do the best they could. But it is our building, and I just, I just think that there are a lot of things that maybe in hindsight could have been done differently. And, you know, just trying to figure out how to work that through in the future. Thank you.
Any more discussion on that? Counselor Daniel Allen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, I agree somewhat with Counselor Hurlbert's comments, except for the fact that I believe the Mariner Center was really just a, a rental space. It could have happened anywhere. I think they would have had the same problem, no matter where they put it up. I think Department of Health dropped the ball, as far as I'm concerned, on letting it be wide open and then by appointment. And no one knew what was going on. I, I don't, I don't believe we should be, we should be wearing, wearing that at all. That, that definitely should not have been our responsibility. We didn't, we didn't even know it was, I, I personally didn't even know it was going to open. It just popped up. Well, it's a pop-up center, I guess, so it just popped up. So, but I, I just believe that Department of Health dropped the ball on the communication issue with that. And, and the process was, was very flawed. I'm hoping that as they move forward with this type of thing, they will, they will have corrected their problems. Thank you.
One thing maybe that I would suggest in all this is maybe that we could reach out to the communications officer. I do believe it's Fraser Mooney out there, and maybe that we get included in some updates and stuff on, on, on what the Department of Health plans. I don't remember. I used to see some, at one time, some emails come through from Department of Health. But the communications, I don't find, has, has kept up with, with all the moving pieces. Now, mind you, we're in times that, that no one ever expected. But maybe we could reach out to Fraser Mooney to maybe include, include us in, in emails. Now, maybe I'm way off basis on that, and, and I'm not sure if I should have pointed out his name, because I'm not sure even if he's the communications officer for, for, for the regional health center. So, Counselor Hilton, maybe you'd be able to shed some light on that. I see your hand up as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll take the heat off Fraser. I, I feel like he manages maybe our local hospital. The pop-up site was run by a provincial, provincial party. I know the CIO has that contact, so I'm sure we could manage to write him a letter, just asking maybe for some better communication. I, I personally feel that it was a pop-up site. Things didn't work out exactly, but the intent was correct. They reached out on a Sunday, or on a, it was like within 24 hours from the time they reached out to Mariner Center to the time they started testing here in Yarmouth. And that's all part of the increase in numbers that we've seen over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, listening to Dr. Strang, I think it's important to, to realize that, you know, with the community outbreaks, that this wasn't a two-week circuit breaker. This was going to be a three or four week. And from what we've seen, starting two days ago, that it's working. And I look forward to enjoying the same summer I did last year. And just want to thank all the frontline healthcare workers that have put that together. And I have, you know, a lot of support in what they're doing. And again, thank them. And we have that contact if we choose to, to maybe to reach out to them. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. And you're absolutely right, Counselor Hilton's thanking the frontline workers in, in this unprecedented times. My, my only issue was, was the, I was contacted by, by, I think it was Counselor Hurlbert, asking if I knew about this, this pop-up session. And I do believe that you went in Counselor Hurlbert to get tested. And then it was the social media is how, how I found out. And then I got barraged with a bunch of emails and stuff, and I had absolutely no idea. And I'm just trying to alleviate some of that. Madam CIO, then Counselor Allen.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a difficult one because of who, who the client was at the Mariner Center. But the Mariner Center, to, to Counselor Allen's point, you know, they, they rent spaces to clients all the time. I'm, I'm fairly certain that people who've attended concerts there, or who've gone to the exhibition there, or maybe have attended Mariners, Junior A games there, you know, their, their service expectations when they've gone there for those things from those clients that we serve, you know, there, there may, may be questions or concerns. So, I think that, you know, this one was particularly problematic just because it related to the, to the pandemic. And, and I would agree, you know, it, it probably could have ran smoother. And, and I do see that, you know, since, since then, Duran has, has sent out, you know, FYI pieces, just, just to kind of help provide some continuity. So, you know, I'm happy to reach out and extend an offer to be part of the solution to Nova Scotia Health. I certainly don't want to add any more stress or, or work for them. So, you know, if, if we can be part of the solution, then absolutely, that's, that's Modi's culture.
Absolutely, part of the solution, not the problem. Counselor Allen.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's probably my sentiments exactly. I, I agree. Our frontline workers deserve a lot of respect right now. Well, they always deserve respect, not right now. It's been a full-time job their whole lives. And, and coming from a family that had a frontline worker for her whole life, very proud to say my mother was a nurse. I just, again, I feel it was a communications error. We want to do as much testing, I, I realize, as possible, but to have hundreds of people lining up and then not, then being turned away and then having to make appointments, I just think was a communications error that I, I would like to see corrected for the future. That's all. I don't want to add, do any undue stress to, to the system. Even our local radio station didn't, couldn't get a straight, our news couldn't get a straight answers to appointments. No appointments. It was appointments at one point, no appointments. Anyways, I just think it was just a communication error. It, it's a little scary in the middle of a pandemic to drive by and see, I'll say, 100 people lined up outside the building, waiting to get in to get tested. Because there, there was a crowd, and, and, you know, rightfully so. Everyone's, everyone is, everyone's trying to do their due diligence around this pandemic right now. So, I just would like to see the communications aspect of it just cleaned up a tiny bit. That would be great. And if we can help as a municipality in getting the word out, I think we should definitely be doing our part.
All right, any more discussion on this? Madam CIO, do you have any direction, or do you want a little bit more clarification on what council wants to do?
I think probably what I'll do, Mr. Chair, based on what I've heard is Counselor Hilton's quite right. We do have a contact name at Nova Scotia Health, so I'll just reach out and, you know, offer to share their messages. Though I'm sure it's easy for us to get added to a distribution list when they're sending out their, their mass communications. And we can even set up a Google alert, so that if something connected to Nova Scotia Health, COVID in Yarmouth pops up, that we can just have a Google alert and, and try to share it.
All right, thank you very much. Are you happy with that, Counselor Hurlbert, and the rest of council? All right, thanks, everyone. Item 6.2.4, safe, sorry, I'm way off. I'm not, should be down to item 7.4. Clarification request in regards to the Heritage Property Program, Madam CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Darlene is with us this morning, and her team's been working hard at getting the program pieces that we'll need for the Heritage Property Program in place. So, a policy document for your review and hopefully approval. And then as well as the administrative pieces, the forms and the applications and things. And as we were working through the process, Darlene raised a question to me that I couldn't answer. It wasn't provided for in the motion. So, the question is, it's anticipated through, based on council's motion, that when the operating budget is approved at the end of May, there will be a brand-new program to support the owners of municipally-registered heritage properties. It will be a five-year program, and each municipally-registered owner will qualify for up to $1,000 a year for a total of $5,000 over five years, to do maintenance and repairs to their home, to maintain the integrity of, of the property, not necessarily home, the property, and specifically the character-defining elements. And so, the question was, what happens between when the project goes live, year one? So, we'll say June 1st this year, through the course of the five-year program? What happens if somebody wants to register a property? And so, we did a little digging and a little research, and I'll share with you that, based on the act, it's impossible for me to give you a number on what your financial exposure would be if you said yes. Newly-registered properties during the course of the five years can enroll, because character-defining elements aren't just related to architecture of a particular era. There's the piece around what that property means in a community and how it speaks to your culture and your heritage. So, it's impossible for me to quantify what your financial exposure would be if your answer was yes to allowing new entrance during the course of this five-year program. And Darlene checked in with Digby, the District of Digby, which is kind of the model we were looking at. And their five-year program, which is ending this year, was only for the registered properties as of the day the program went live. So, I do need clarification from council on how you wish to proceed.
Deputy Warden.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that we, we need to define the, the financial commitment. Clearly, the, the motion spoke to a defined financial commitment. So, I think that we should have that understanding here at, at council, that, that is indeed the fact. And, and clarify that by adding that into the, adding that into the program. It's a, it's a caveat.
Is there any more discussion on that? Counselor Durkey, I've seen your mic go off and your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, we, we created this based on the, the people who already have registered heritage properties. And so, the number that we came up with was, was based on, on that. So, I think my recommendation would be to go with our five-year plan that we have in place for those who are registered. And, you know, look at future plans for those who are joining. Just, just a thought. I mean, on, on the other hand, it would be nice to help those who are, want to get registered. But then again, they may want to get registered because there's this program. So, I think I, I would just follow what it was in place. And since we modeled Digby's plan, to go with, with that.
Any other comments? I don't see none. So, I guess what I, what the CIO is looking for is a, a motion to, to go forward to, to regular council to, to only include the current registered heritage properties. And I think that's pretty well what I heard here so far. Deputy Warden.
Yes, I'll, I'll move that, that we move forward with this to our regularly-scheduled council meeting with the intent being to, to only include those properties that are currently registered in this program.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? They're seconded by Counselor Hurlbert. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Madam CIO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I just wanted to share some thoughts around logistics with council about the program. So, technically, it's not a program until you approve your budget at the end of the month. And so, it'll take us a, a little bit to get organized and get everything ready. So, just want to let you know that in my mind, I'm thinking that we'll have some kind of a launch, probably virtual launch event of the program and rollout in June. Once we have the, the policy has to be reviewed in June at Committee of the Whole, and then it has to get approved. So, the rollout will, you know, won't be immediate. As of the approval of your budget, there will be a few pieces we have to look after. So, it'll take, you know, a month or six weeks to kind of get organized and before we can actually roll it out.
Madam, or sorry, Counselor Durkey.
I just want to say thank you to our CIO for moving forward with this. And I think it's really exciting for those people to, who have heritage properties, to be able to maintain them. Great for our community. Thank you.
Absolutely, I agree, Counselor Hurlbert. But unfortunately, the, the, the things are rising in price and stuff. That, that goes a little, does a little bit of help, but the price of upkeep on, on a heritage building with all the structural, structural differences that they have is, is, is quite daunting. So, at least we're extending a little bit of help towards people who own these properties. Good. All right, moving on to new business, 8.1, draft access to information policy A-033-21. You all have that in your package, and I'm believing either Madam CIO Victoria or Darlene LeBlanc would speak to this.
So, I can start, and Darlene can fill in any gaps that I might leave. So, council, this is before you for your consideration and discussion. And again, it's one of those I's we're dotting and T's we're crossing around providing a framework for routine access to information in the municipality of Yarmouth. So, it's a model, it's a model policy that we're, we're bringing forward, and we've customized it for Modi. The definitions section are in there, and it's really helpful, so that people understand the difference between what can be routinely shared and if there's a cost for that versus what would be a FOIPOP, a Freedom of Information application. So, it's a really important tool for the public, for council and for staff, just to keep moving forward on that, on that, you know, being accessible to the public and being transparent.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Input, removal? Deputy Warden.
Yeah, the, the policy's good in, in terms of what our CIO's outlined. It does provide some clarity for the public about what we can release just in, in due course and, and what actually does need to, to go through the FOIPOP application process. So, given that, I'll make the motion that we move to, for approval to the regularly-scheduled council meeting, the access to information policy A-033-21.
All right, a motion on the floor to move this to regular council. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Is there any discussion on that motion? Madam CIO, it says here in 5.2, the fees, there's no charge for applications for routine access to records. Is that just regular access that's already open to public? Because obviously, that's outside of the FOIPOP realm, correct?
That's right. But we've actually said that, Mr. Chair, because to make a FOIPOP application, there is a fee to even apply. And so, what we're saying here is, you know, just to request routine access, there's no application fee.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted clarification on that. All right, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, from what I see, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 8.2, the addition to the agenda item, Arcadia Trail, the Tickapock Trail. Counselor Nick Hilton, you had asked to have this added to the agenda, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is something that's been brought to my attention. It's actually, well, in mine and Daniel's communities. And it's something that I use on a fair, fairly regular basis. And there's been an increase in vandalism on the trail, a number of signs being knocked down. Some of the wooden structures may be in disrepair, and with COVID... Some of the wooden structures may be in disrepair and with COVID, with COVID, those, the access to recreation in, in trails is becoming increasingly more important, the fact that we can't travel. Our assets are being used more and more. We have very few walking trails that are family-accessible in Yarmouth County, or in my opinion, we do. And very few that are in good shape. So, and as I said, I, I'm getting an email or two a week related to that, especially since since the number of the signs have been knocked down. I'm, have a couple of questions maybe for the CAO as well. I just learned yesterday that it really is owned by the municipality. So, you know, what is our responsibility to maintain that trail? Do we invest any money yearly in maintaining that trail or every few years into maintaining that trail? And what a program could look like to assist in that in making those repairs? And do we have any partners? I know we partnered with AFN on the signage. But obviously, you know, when they, they put their name on something, we can't let it go into disrepair. So in saying that, I am also willing to participate in, in becoming more of the solution. There is a number of residents that when COVID allows, would like to participate in a work party once or twice a year to do that. But we would need some funds on how to, in buying gravel through fundraising, through maybe some money from us and some repairs to the structures. And again, I'm not sure what I'm allowed to do as a counselor on our own assets. So I have a lot of questions around that and, and and I'm bringing it up here because I feel like we own it, we have a responsibility to help take care of it. And as I said, there's very few of them. And I'd like to move that forward before the end of the summer to make sure that the trail is safe for everyone to use. I know we check on it weekly, but we don't do a lot of repairs. So I would be interested to hear some input from all of you on what your thoughts are going forward for this trail and maybe some others. Thank you.
Okay, who, who wants to go first? Madam CEO?
So maybe I can help council and I'll share just a little bit about, so this trail falls under our Recreation Department. So Frank Grant is Director of Recreation, is, is leading the oversight for all of our trails. And so when we were at the staff level working in January on the capital budget and, and the operating budget, this particular trail has, fits into both categories. So Counselor Hilton is quite right, you know, there's standard annual repairs and maintenance pieces that Frank has provided for some, some work around, you know, clearing of fallen trees, which has caused some damage. Going in weekly and picking up garbage and checking on things, but then there, there are some capital pieces that are developing there. And so when we talked about recreation and we talked about capital, there, the focus this year was on finishing the projects at the Rotary Center. But Frank has, has brought to my attention that the Tipop Trail definitely is, is next on the priority list. We do, to Counselor Hilton's point, we do leverage volunteers and work parties as much as we can. I don't know what we would do without the Rails to Trails Group in terms of keeping some of those assets in, in as good a condition as we can. And so I'm more than happy to kind of put Frank together with, with a group of volunteers and, and see what we can work out. I'm sure that we can find some money to, to do some work this year. And then if there are larger ticket financial items, then at least get them inventoried, get some pricing on them and get them on the radar.
Counselor Hilton?
Thanks again, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the CEO for that. Again, this was about kind of shining the light on some of the work that needs to be done and, and nothing against Frank and his team because they do a wonderful job. It's about moving this particular asset forward and, and there is some work there to be done. And, and as I said, it was, it's more along fixing a little bit of what we already have, not adding a whole lot to it. So cost, I know plays a factor in everything. And I think there's quite a few families and volunteers that would be very encouraged and, and would be willing to help out in that project again when COVID allows us to. And it would just cost us, the cost to us would be maybe some gravel and a few two-by-fours to fix up the, the the structures that are already in place. So I would, I'd put that to the CEO that I'm willing to help organize the volunteer group for that particular job. There's already a small group of residents looking to do that. So again, feel free to reach out to me and I, I very much appreciate the information.
And Counselor Hilton, if anything does transpire from that, I'm certainly willing to help. I've also been, also have all kinds of chainsaws and all the certifications to make sure that I'm safe with them. So I'm just not one of the weekend warriors with the stuff. I have all this safety gear. So if, if you need help along that lines, I can certainly help along.
Liability was one of my questions that I wanted to address before we did this work.
Counselor Daniel Allen and the CEO?
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Nick for bringing, bringing up the trail. I know it's important to the community. A lot of people use it. And I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm definitely willing to take part. I think first and foremost, it should be coordinated with, with our Recreation Department. Because they do take care of it. I, I want to make sure that what we're doing is, is in line with what they'd like to see. So but yeah, I, I have no problem with taking part and, and trying to get something done out there if they need some help. But I'm like, Nick, don't give me a power saw. I, no, no. I don't mind lugging brush, but please don't let me cut my leg off. But yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I kind of thought we might, we haven't had a recreation meeting in a while. I was, I kind of thought this may actually hit that radar at some point with, with maybe in his budgets and things like that. So but yeah, we're, I mean, I'm like Nick and John, I'm more than happy to go help and, but I'd like to see us coordinate with Recreation to make sure we can get the job done that they, they see that needs to be done.
Counselor Allen, I have one of those chainsaws that like a toy that you pull on, it's plastic. It doesn't have any things sharp on it. It just makes noise. So I think you can operate that. Madam CEO?
So to Counselor Hilton's question about liability, so I, I would agree that this needs to be coordinated and led by Frank and his team for sure, with support from the people who've, who've put up their hand. We would probably have a waiver situation. So when people volunteered, we would just have them, have them sign a waiver. Having, having recreation staff on-site for the project and supervising and being the ones to undertake certain tasks like operating chainsaws. We have certified chainsaw operators on staff. So yeah, we would be intentional around those pieces for sure.
All right, you happy with that, Counselor Hilton?
Yes, much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for bringing that up. That's, that's a trail that actually I, I haven't walked the whole trail in, in quite a while, but actually I was down there two weeks ago giving my, my little furry friend a run. So and I certainly enjoy that trail. That trail also brings back a lot of memories. I remember going there in elementary school back 45-plus years ago and when that trail was actually in use back then. So that has a lot of history in, in, in the Arcadia area and it's a view, very beautiful spot, very unique to the, to the area. All right, next item on the agenda is in-camera items. So I'd entertain a motion to Madam CEO before we go.
Mr. Chair, could we just have a brief recess either before or after we make the motion to go in camera? Just a bio break would be great.
Yes, I was thinking of that once we went into camera that we'd have a five-minute recess in there. So I'd entertain a motion to go into camera. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. All right, everyone, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Thank you very much. All right, everyone, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. We're back to in-camera. Move on to item number, is there any in-camera recommendations? Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Right, whereas COVID-19 has presented students within the municipality of the District of, of Yarmouth with challenges associated with post-secondary attendance. And whereas Modi may have access to safe restart monies, I move that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth allot an additional $5,000 for the post-secondary bursary program for the 2021, sorry, 2122 fiscal.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton? Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. We're at the end of our committee of the whole agenda. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Counselor Sherry Hurlbert, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Mike, let me know when you're done.